Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's board meeting. It is Tuesday, March 28th. And can I ask Scott to lead us?
I'm excited to meet you.
A pleasure to be here. To the United States of America. A sincere public for which it stands. One audition under God. In this law, we're ready to justice all.
Well done, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did not have an executive session this evening, and we entered into our meeting at 7:41. We'll say. At this time, are there any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor? Yes, thank you, everybody. And we're going to go. And can I have a motion for tonight's consent agenda items? Consent agenda personnel, consent agenda 7.1, special services, and consent agenda business.
So.
All those in favor? Okay, and he just had a very special thing that's happened.
A very special thing just happened. You might have missed it if you didn't read the whole agenda. So Jack and Kendall, I would like to know, have you read the agenda tonight? Do you know what just happened that was very special? Can you guess?
He's getting appointed assistant athletic director.
Yes. And I would like to say a few words about your dad, and I hope that you remember these words because I'm saying them to him as much as I'm saying them to you two and to your lovely wife Kelly, who I've known for a long time. And, you know, this is not an easy job to fill, right? Because Byram Hills is a very complex place. We have so many sports programs. We have so much happening in our physical education and our athletics program. Your dad's longtime colleague Jenny Crook is here to support him tonight as he is getting this new position, as is his athletic director, Rob Kostagna. And that's because your dad knows a lot about this organization, and he works collaboratively with all these people around him to make sure that we can give the students who are here the best possible experience they have. How many teams do we have? Fifty-seven?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, well, yeah. And then flag, girls' flag football in there, too?
That's right.
Because every minute, we're getting a new one. And thank you, Jenny, for coaching that. So sixty-six different teams coming and going in each of these seasons, all of these different coaches. We have physical education that's happening for every student, kindergarten through 12th grade. So your dad is going to be responsible for helping to figure out what everybody's doing in phys ed. Two thousand three hundred students are going to rely on your dad and Mr. Kostagna working together to make sure that they have the best program. And then how many kids are in athletics? How many kids are in our athletics program?
I have those percentages, but I haven't told you.
Very high percentage of our kids who are playing sports at any given time of the year, from tennis to softball to flag football for girls. We have a multitude of sporting events that these kids are going to be involved in. And then health education and making healthy choices all the time. Kids are going to learn about healthy choices kindergarten through 12th grade because your dad is going to have a part in setting up that curriculum for those kids. So this is no easy job. So it is with great pride and great respect for you and what you're going to do for Byram Hills. I am so pleased that this Board of Education has approved this appointment for Scott.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that, you know, we have talked about this position for quite a while, and we are so grateful to Rob for running such a robust program. It's a wonderful thing for the students at Byram Hills, and we're so excited to offer the support to you and approve this position tonight. I think everybody agrees.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's great. Great for this organization.
Yes.
So I know that your father is the assistant director for health, but no kid comes into my house without getting sick.
Yeah.
But you have to just promise that you will not eat all this chocolate in one sitting.
I don't want to start your chips and pretzels. That's your option. All right, you're welcome. You're welcome. So should we take a moment?
Yes.
All right, we'll take a moment to congratulate you.
Yes, because what time do you have to go to school tomorrow? You have a late day.
He doesn't go to school until nine.
I leave for the bus at like eight twenty.
Eight twenty. So it starts at nine, right?
I realize.
Eight forty-three, final?
What school?
What school do you go to?
Yeah, what school do they go to?
Eight oh five.
Steel Express, though, works now.
They're in my town. I think I should be the emergency contact. All right, let's go say congratulations.
Well, congratulations, you guys.
Here we are again, lovely. Hi, we're back.
So nice.
Okay. And now we're going to go on to new business. We're going to do 9.1, the approval of the 2023-24 Board of Education meeting calendar. Does anybody have an opportunity to look at that? And were there any concerns or conflicts? No? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this calendar in a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. And I'm going to ask, let's see, for an approval for our APPR. Does anybody have anything to say about it?
I have a few things.
Okay, great.
So I'm going to give you an overview so you know you're approving and adopting.
Yes.
So I'll just go through it briefly. Thanks for our audience for sitting through this. I won't go through all the background, but if you recall, in 2011, the state did a major overhaul of the teacher evaluation process, and there were several changes since then. I won't go through all of that background right now, but I want to give you an overview of our system and what you're going to be agreeing to tonight. There weren't many changes, but because of the last contract negotiation with the VHTA, we had to revise our annual professional performance review, which is the teacher evaluation and the principal evaluation process. We were still writing on the 2016 regulations, and until we renegotiated our contract, we didn't have to update it to align it with the 2019 regulations. But there were some changes in that. So to just give you an overview again, so you recall, the evaluation system has two parts to it on evaluating both teachers and principals. There's the observation section and the student performance section. The observation section is comprised of a lead evaluator, which would be like the teacher's principal, and then independent observer, which would be someone from a different building. That was a requirement of the state. The student performance had to be based on a state-approved assessment, meaning we set targets, and then if teachers hit the target, they get a particular score. Those two scores, the observations of student performance, are put together using a state-approved matrix to get a teacher's overall effectiveness score and rating. And that rating is based on highly effective, effective, developing, and ineffective. That's all mandated by the state. So I want to go through what we agreed to with the teachers and with the principals. Not a lot of changes. I'll point out where there were changes from the last APPR that you agreed to. So for our teachers, I'll start with teachers. We have the probationary teachers receive three formal observations. That's like a clinical observation process, which starts with a pre-observation conference, the observation, and a post-observation conference, and one unannounced observation. These are minimum. There could be more that occur. And I can tell you that we are in probationary teachers' classrooms more than just one unannounced time frequently. For tenure teachers, it's one announced and one unannounced observation. And this is every year. And then in our system, we also do a mid-year evaluation of probationary teachers, and all teachers get a final evaluation. The minister writes up final evaluation. We have a long form for that. For student performance, this is where we made a change on the assessments. We used to base it on seven, the seven regents exams that we give, but we reduced it down to just four regents exams. We felt we just didn't need all seven. However, this is temporary because for the independent observation, you remember, we do the waiver process, so we don't do that anymore. So we don't have administrators traveling to other buildings and spending so much time out of the buildings. That was a post-COVID response that we had, where we wanted to keep our administrators in the building. We still feel like that's the best approach. Every year, we can apply for that waiver. And we also are doing a variance. You'll recall me talking about the variance, and I'll go through what the variance is going to be. So we're not basing a teacher's score on a test score. We're basing it on the actions teachers take that we believe had an impact on student performance over time. So I'll talk about the variance. So the variance, which I'll come to you next year to approve the next three-year variance. We're finishing our three-year variance this year, where we base it on structures that we've already had for a long time in Byram Hills. That's for probationary teachers, they do a portfolio project. After every observation they get, they reflect on that observation using the rubric that we use for teacher performance. That's Charlotte Danielson's rubric. It's a state-approved rubric. So teachers have to write and reflect on the observation information they get from their teachers relative to the elements of the rubric. So it's a very intensive process where we get teachers conditioned to be reflecting on their practice. For tenure teachers, every year, they create a professional growth plan. So now our variance rates those things instead of rating a test that students take and based on the target that the kids reach on the test. This way, teachers are more control of the actions that they take that lead to what we believe is their professional growth, which impacts student performance. We're going to keep the same elements. We don't plan on changing anything in the variance when we apply for that next year. But I will have to come to the board for your approval on next year's variance. The other elements in our local piece is the portfolio project and the professional growth plan. That's part of our annual professional performance review that we do locally for teachers. That's been in our system for about 25 years now, I think. Teachers have been doing a portfolio of professional growth plans. For principals, it's very similar, except we call it school visits instead of observations. And it's the same type of process. It's the combination of school visits and student performance that lead to the principal's score. We did not change anything in this aspect of the observations, school visits for principals. It's the same number of observations as it was previously. What do you observe? Do you like a faculty meeting? Yeah, I'll show you that. Yeah, so, yeah, that's a different piece. We visit the principals, so we will go to that. The principals tour the buildings with them, walk in the classrooms. Sometimes we do it at presentations like principals' coffees. It could be faculty meetings when the principals come up and present to you. These could be some of the unannounced. They don't know we're observing them at the time, but afterwards, we tell them. So we observe that visit. So it occurs frequently. I feel like our principals are sort of always, we observe them a lot more than the required four or five observations that we do, but it's their various functions. Sometimes it's a matter of having a meeting and walking around their building and having them show us things.
It's a lot more required evaluation instead of teacher.
Yeah, it's always performing. So the state is allowing a new system now, the 2019 changes to the regulations, which is called an input model, which is essentially what we were doing with the variance for both teachers and principals last time. So the state's actually allowing this for principals, not for teachers, though. And I'll show you what our variance is based on. So every year, you know the administrators write goals based on board goals and the district initiatives, and they come in October and present to you their goals. So that's what we're basing the input model on, is using these five elements of their approved rubric, which talks about the environment or the culture. It talks about the alignment of their goals to the district mission, their strategic planning, so what are the plans they have in place to achieve their goals, their ability to take action, mobilize people, monitor their progress toward the vision, and then evaluating their own progress. So there's a rubric that we evaluate those five criteria, and that comprises the input model. And that's how the second half of their evaluation gets scored. So it's this and the school visits together, which make up the score. Is that a permanent change that they made? Yes, yeah, they added this. That was new. And I think it's the state's effort to transition away from the slows, which I think they haven't said publicly, but privately in conversations I've had with state ed that they know this is a failure, and they're trying to move on to better models. So when I was looking at this model, the principal's input model, which is now approved by the state since 2019, they've been allowing it. I was working with a reviewer on our plan, and they told me I'm the first school in New York to do the input model.
Really?
So I was sort of the test case. So they were giving me a hard time on a few things, and I actually wrote back to them and pointed out in their Q and A where that I thought they were wrong and said, no, but your model says this. And they had to go back and sort of, I guess, huddle and come back and say, oh, you're sort of right. You just add this language. So I was the first one to go through this. So we're the first ones to do this input model in the state, which is pretty interesting. I think it's so much better. It makes logical sense. It really does. It's, principals are more in control of the actions that they do. And so that's what is made up in the APPR.
Just a question. You had mentioned that we are moving away from looking at student performance in order to review a teacher's progress, but we're using, what measurements are we using? You talked about the portfolio. Was it the portfolio? So, yeah, what are the measurements for that?
Yeah. So, yeah, we've been doing that for the last three years. We did the variance, a sort of a test run, and I think it works so much better. It really aligns with what we value, which is letting the teacher take action so that they can work on their own improvement with the coaching of their principals and chairs and directors, as opposed to at the end of the year, we're going to look at a test score, see how the kids do, and then we will assign you a score based on that. That just model never really worked, and it didn't, the data across the state was that it really did not have any impact.
Yeah.
It depends on whether you're getting your class on any given year. If you have a class of kids you are getting.
Yep, that was a big worry at first.
Yeah. It's not an accurate.
It was a system that, we could also set our own targets. So it was really a system that everyone was sort of gaming, and it just really didn't lead to any sustained improvement across the state. There's been a lot of studies of that model, and the state's trying to get away from that. So in the growth models and all that, we're just garbageing, burping it out. But when you think about the massive amount of data that you do have, and it's not one data point by any stretch. Exactly. But you have regents, you have APs, you have grades, you have portfolios of work. Like, how do you sort of get your arms around using some of that data for this process, even if it's not formulated? Because it's not necessarily formulated, but still to inform how we improve. Yeah, so the rubrics behind this, there are rubrics that the portfolio and that the portfolio project and the professional growth plans are rated. Then we rate the teachers using a rubric that we created. And in that rubric, it has elements for reflecting on your professional practice relative to seeing improved student results. So it's a matter of the teacher and the administrator looking at what they agree on as valuable information to look at. And if teachers are doing that, then we rate them accordingly on that element of the rubric. So we build that into our rubric, like our student work, which we think is much more meaningful than just a single score.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you so much. Can I have a motion to approve the annual performance review of the APPR? A second. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to 9.3, a public hearing of the volunteer firefighter and ambulance workers tax exemption.
Yes.
Ask Kelly to talk about it.
So we're just going to call the board that public hearing to solicit comments from the public in regards to the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers tax exemption. The school district will provide this tax exemption to the, again, volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers for a 10% reduction in their assessed value of the property. In order to qualify for this exemption, you must be, you must serve in the same community in which you live to be a firefighter or ambulance worker. Again, must be a primary residence, and you need to have a minimum service requirement of five years. And so the exemption will stay active as long as you serve in that capacity. Okay. So in terms of how many properties, that's 36 properties in the town of North Castle. And based on the tax rate for next year, that's approximately $34,000 in total. So unfortunately, this exemption, this exemption won't take place until the 24, 25 school year. So it's not going to be in the next school budget, but the following after that. So unless there's any questions from the board, it'll be a resolution at the following meeting on April 11.
For community edification, this already exists in the town?
Yep, the town accepted this about five, six years ago. So this is a continuation of that exemption for the school district.
Any questions or comments?
And they must be the whole one.
Yes, correct.
Do we have a projection? So 24, 25 school years, one of us will take it back. Do we have a projection of, when you said 36 families?
Thirty-six properties, yep.
Thirty-six properties. Do we have a projection if that will increase or decrease depending on tenure of the other person?
Depending on tenure of the person?
So they have to be active five years.
Oh, correct, yeah.
So do we have a projection of who may be rolling up after when their five years comes up? So it goes from 36 to 40?
I don't have the information right now. I mean, usually, it's pretty consistent in terms of volunteers.
We do have a spreadsheet, though. I don't think that there were so many more. I mean, there were many names on there who might be like in a household, like a student or somebody in their twenties who's still living at home.
Right.
We have that spreadsheet of names.
Yeah, that's the 36, right. But we don't know who's going to join or.
Increase and decrease.
We don't know who may join in five years.
Right, I mean, some could come off and then some could come back on. But usually, around the same level in terms of staff. You have to be the taxpayer or the deedee owner, basically, you know? Right. And if you look at the 36, the group that we have right now, and you distribute that to, I mean, it's going to depend on property, but for an average household, how much of an increase is it roughly? Yeah, that's tough to say, but it's definitely less than a dollar, I'd say. I mean, you're talking about a total of $34,000 over, you know, 4,600 properties in the school district, so.
Thank you so much. Do we have to vote on that?
There'll be a resolution on the next board meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to unfinished business and budget hearing number three. Are we doing the calendar yet? The calendar, can you do the calendar?
Oh, yeah.
And while we're waiting for that, just to, I'd just like to note for the community how much the district does appreciate our volunteer firefighters and our volunteer ambulance coworkers and EMS. And just from having been in this district for 33 or so years, we've called on these departments and relied on these departments in a volunteer capacity, and they have always been immediately responsive to us. And, you know, we're not allowed to, I'm not allowed to just say, hey, let's do this because they're a fantastic group of volunteers who support our community so strongly. But I'm so happy that we are in parting on this process.
Absolutely.
Yes. Very well said. All right.
All right, so we've gone through January 24th, which was budget hearing one. March 7th was the administration's proposed budget. March 21st was budget hearing two. Tonight, we are on March 28th, which is budget hearing three. We will share nine of interscholastic athletics, operations and maintenance, transportation services, and revenue. After tonight, there will be budget hearing four on April 11th, which is the final proposed budget. April 18th is the budget adoption. May 2nd, budget hearing five, review of proposed budget. And May 16th, please come out and vote.
However you want.
But that is the budget vote at HCC today, 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. But please, you know, come out and vote.
This is the last one they can, that's all they can put in, right?
Right.
Yes, tonight is the last one where public can comment on the question.
All right, thank you so much for that lovely reading.
Very nice.
Drive me a calendar. And, okay, we're going to start with our, I guess, is it school facilities first?
Yeah. Well, first, I think we'll just talk about the budget.
Yeah, sorry.
2223 budget, our current budget versus our proposed budget with an increase of $2,785,725, or a budget-to-budget increase of 2.87%. And tonight, first on our agenda is interscholastic athletics. Rob, it's the night to be you. We finally got to present about interscholastic athletics. There's help on the way. Scott Saunders in the assistant athletic director position for Rob.
Thank you for that, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening and for your support. I'll jump right into the slide, if I may, that's on the screen there. And then I'll share some information that supports the screen. So we have several components on the left side that make up the budget. The first one at the top there, just to mention a few, is the salaries. And as we mentioned, tonight, the increase there is due to that position that was created.
And other salaries.
And other salaries increases as well. And thank you for your support of that budget line and for the new position. The equipment and our materials and supplies will stay the same. Slight increase in contractual services and other. One example that's in that, in that budget line is if we rent the stadium lights or if we have any contracts with any vendors, that's in that budget line. And BOSI services with a 2% standard increase for game officials and the services that were received from Southern Westchester BOSIs. The budgets, the budget will continue to support, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, 66 different athletic teams, grades seven through 12. And within that budget, we have 22 different sports, 100 coaching positions. If we were to fill every position that we have budgeted, and it includes a full-time athletic trainer as well. And for the, for the middle school, tell you where we are right now. You know, coming out of the last two school years where our numbers were down due to the pandemic, our numbers are now on the rise. And I'm really excited about the numbers. This year, for the middle school, for the eligible seventh and eighth graders that participate in interscholastic athletics at HCC, we have 46% of the students participate in the fall, 25% in the winter, and 36% are participating this spring. That includes the interscholastic programs that we offer and any intramural programs that we offer. At the high school, we, we're also adding numbers to the programs, and the students are coming out for the programs. We have 42% students participating, grades nine through 12, in the fall. Consistent with the middle school, it drops in the winter, and that's normal for just about every high school in our region. 29% participation in the winter and 40% this spring, which is the highest that we've had in five years in the spring. And that is due to our addition, the program that we added for flag football for the girls. It's well-received. And we're also offering the same program at the middle school at HCC on an intramural level for beginner program there. And also with boys' volleyball, giving that a try. Girls' flag football and boys' volleyball are the two programs in our state that are showing the fastest growth and the most consistent growth for teams every year, reported from New York State Public High School Athletic Association. That doesn't include, the numbers, the percentages that I've explained to you does not include the participation that we have, for example, in the fitness center after school. That's, you know, basically, it's an intramural program because you can come as you please on a daily basis. And we have that, the fitness center staff or the supervisor, two hours a day for five days a week.
Is that just at the high school or at the middle school?
That's just at the high school after school. It's just at the high school. And we've been happy with, very happy with the students that have been coming out for that as well. And that, the numbers also include the unified bowling that we've added this year. We, we have one, we have one competition left in unified bowling. That'll be after the vacation, after the spring break. And unified basketball, we've increased, we will be increasing the schedule from four games last year to seven games this season, this spring. So we're really excited about that. And that's just a consistent high five. That's just a high-five program that we're getting a lot of good feedback from. that we're getting a lot of good feedback from. So thank you. That's, so that's what the budget supports. We, we appreciate all of your support. Any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer.
Rob, how's it going with coach recruitment and just salaries? Because I know we had attractive calibrates, just to make sure we're competitive, is everything?
Yeah, that, that, that has helped. Definitely has helped the, the recruitment process. But the recruitment process, you know, right now, we're, we're, we're doing everything that we can to retain coaches and, you know, making an effort to really spend time with the coaches. I know, I know the, the additional support to, to the department will definitely help because when we're, if, you know, we're continually spread thin, then that, you know, you need to spend time with the people, there's mentoring involved, there's, there's observations and an evaluation process. But right now, we're good, we're, we're okay with, all of our teams are, are staffed with coaches, and we're in a good place, in a good place, thank you.
How are officials?
Officials, officials is still a hurdle that we're, we're getting over, you know, season by season. And, and we're just, you know, our, and, and from my point of view, it's what can we do here at Byron Hills? What can we do? And we took some steps that were appreciated and they were, they were acknowledged. For example, early in the winter season, we put out a short video clip that you may have seen with some of our students saying, hey, you know, let the players play, let, let the officials officiate. And it really was well-received. And, and everybody who saw that video acknowledged it, and we believe that's in a good place, where the, the officials are respected, and we just need to keep, we need to keep on that mission, we need to keep that moving forward. So the officials feel welcomed, and we want them to accept the assignment at Byron Hills. Because official has a right to turn back an assignment, but we're, we're not seeing that, we're not feeling that, and we're, we're happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Turn it over to Steve, tell him about Operation Mina.
John Baxter, thanks for coming tonight to support Operation Mina.
So I'm just gonna start on sixteen-twenty, operation plan. So we have a one point five decrease in salaries there, and that's due to retirements, like the custodian, the retiring this past year at the high school. Also, there's BOSI services or co-serves, so we offer the BOSIs we use for testing lead water, you know, lead in the water, we use our heroin reports, all that kind of stuff comes from, from BOSIs. Maintenance of plant, I'm sorry, there's a total increase in sixteen-twenty of one point one percent. Maintenance of plant sixteen-twenty-one is a zero point eight decrease. And I'm just gonna jump right into, I'm gonna jump right into the cap plan, if that's okay, if you have any questions on the cap plan. So Coleman Hill, we're gonna be doing the water line, I think that everybody knows about, we're gonna be going from window farms underneath twenty-two across the front of the property, basically right to the sidewalk of the school in front of the main office. And that is starting pretty much the day after school is released. And we have a finish date of, I believe, August fourth on that contract. And it leaves a very tight window for, because we're gonna be paving the whole entire parking lot up there after that project's done, we're gonna be doing a bus turnaround, so there's gonna be quite a bit of work happening up at Coleman Hill, we're gonna do a little sidewalk work down on the south end of the building. And camp, we had to move camp out of there this summer, so camp's gonna be held at HCC.
Kickaboo got kicked over to HCC. Yeah, I asked for it.
Yes, so we went through it with the camp and Kim down at HCC, so they're all set up, they're happy, we're giving them.
Great, they sent me an email begging for everything that you did for the transition plan.
Good, thank you. So that's the work that's gonna be in the bus loop, we're cutting in a bus loop on the south end, and then we're widening the roadway right behind the playground that goes around to the loop there, because they're rather tight, so. At HCC, we're gonna be demoing and installing a new sidewalk, so when you're pulling in in front of the cafeteria, we're gonna be doing the right side, that whole entire sidewalk's coming up. We're gonna be doing a new sidewalk with a design, so we're gonna lose some trees out of there, because those trees are over, they're starting to overgrow and the roots are lifting up on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's been becoming a little safety, you know, safety issue. So we're gonna do that whole side this year. John and I are working on a design with the contractor, and we are looking at putting up lantern lighting. So it's nice lighting that would come down the sidewalk and plant some new trees, and where the trees are gonna be, it's gonna be boxed out, it'll be gravelled in there. And then the lantern lighting, there'll be hangers that we can put nice flower arrangements over, and it's gonna look, you know, it's gonna look nice. And then hopefully next year, we can do the rest of the sidewalk around the other side. So we're coming up with a design, it's not done yet, I think we're meeting with Kim, not next week, the following week, with the contractor, just to go over a final design down there. So it's gonna look really nice. So that's HCC. District-wide, we're gonna be doing the typical that we do every year, LED lighting throughout, you know, we're working on getting all the classrooms done eventually, all the hallways, we're getting there, it's, it's a lot, but changing ceilings out and VCT floor. So that, that is pretty much it, that's what I have, if anybody has any questions.
In terms of HCC, I know they have those concrete barricades, will they'll still be in?
They're still gonna be there, yes. So we're going basically to that point on the right side.
Right.
Okay, and then there's some trees that are really close together that we have to pull out. You know, we hate pulling out trees, so what we, we have planned is every tree that we pull out, we'll plant a tree somewhere else on the property to.
That's great.
So until we do a final design, so.
Well, yes. Great.
And just in the planning, is there just ample capacity just to make sure that the fields are taken care of to the, you know, best extent they can be? I know there's issues with just not being able to pesticides, or there, there's limitations that what we're gonna do, but just in the extent that we have control over it.
Yeah, so I think like at, at HCC, like the lumberyard field, what we're doing there, we've been moving the goals around because they do use it for recess down there, so what happens is usually, because that field, we, I think we started a little over a year ago, or, yeah, probably about a year and a half ago. So what we do there is we move the goal around so they're not wearing out one. You know, for game time, obviously, the goals are where they have to be, but for recess, we move it around so they're not wearing out one section. We're trying to give fields a rest too, you know, Rob and I work on, and John, we work on, you know, getting together with the rec department, seeing what we can rest. It's not easy resting the fields because they're really used basically seven days a week. But we, we do, we do work on them, and we are able to, like the lower soccer field, we're looking at possibly at some point in time, giving that a rest, where we'll aerate seed and fertilize the center of the field, and then, you know, we, we have irrigation. So we're trying to keep, you know, have a process and keep that going, but it's not the easiest process, but. So that's been, I think we've come a long way with that, so we close fields when they're too wet, and we feel that people can't be on them.
That makes a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, we have those big ugly field code signs that we put out there, hopefully enough, but.
We've been doing tours of the buildings the last couple of weeks, I think, I'm thinking mom specifically, because they've made a point of pointing out the floors and.
Yes, great.
Great.
Yeah, so we're in the process, that's what we're doing basically everywhere until everything is, is done, you know, so every summer, we just add and we just do a new section.
That's pretty good.
There are some HVAC units that we are replacing this summer. I know one of the questions came up last year about, you know, inventory, and are we able to get parts and equipment? So there still are some issues with HVAC equipment. A lot of the other stuff or parts on, on other things that we do, like motors and stuff that's cleaned up, we're able to get, you know, we're able to get things when we want them. So certainly, it depends what it is, but there's still some issues with the supply chain, but it's better than it was, so.
Good. Steve, any large projects coming up that you anticipate, you know, tech improvements or replacements that we maybe?
So I think, well, it's two things, so the water system at the high school, just, we've been in contact, the engineers have been in contact with the county, we still have no approvals on that. I know we talked about this last year, so here's the whole year gone by, we're still not there yet. And that's gonna be the huge, a huge project when it is approved, with all kinds of tanks that are going there, and their equipment and things like that. I think over a five-year plan, I think our, our view over the next five years is continue to replace, you know, old existing boilers that are at their, you know, getting to their age limit, and rooftop units, old air conditioning units, old heating units, some smaller roof sections, you know, thing like that, things like that. So we have basically a five-year program in place. We don't, I don't have it in front of you right now, but it is, it is written, but that does change quite a bit as priorities come up.
Yeah, sure.
So there is, there is a plan.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
And what probably, I think, probably you're involved, just like looking into solar or makes any sense or not, is that a this year thing, or is that just a sort of a separate analysis?
Probably next year, end of next year, still looking at the, the contract with the vendor, drag out of the part, and then once that goes forward, we'll talk about the design and all those environmental concerns, and we'll go forward that way. But still, they're very much in the process, not immediate though.
Great, anything else?
Thank you.
Just a comment, Steve, that thanks to continuing to keep up our buildings and have all of this planning, we're not going out to the public with these huge bonds.
Right.
Because they're, everything is breaking, and, and we have not been maintaining them or replacing them over time, so that's a, a huge assurance to our public that, that we've done such a good job of maintaining our buildings. Then on a personal note, I want to thank you for being such a pain in the rear end as I am. You know, just even thinks about the, the close communication you've had with me and with the town about the water at Coleman Hill, and, and how great it was to be at that panel that night, and to hear all of these experts say that the PFOs levels going into Coleman Hill are below the ten parts per trillion, and, and even though that's all fine, well and good the next day, Kelly, and I, I said, I don't know, you know, can you now, I, now I have these, I was like, I've got four, one from each building, I'm not telling you which one. Please send these out for testing, because I also want it taken from the spout, I want to make sure that everything everybody's telling us. And you, you never tire of my requests, that's crazy as they are. So I want to thank you for that, because.
I appreciate it.
Safety means as much to you as it does.
Me and Jen have a lot of conversations in the morning when we're on our way in, so.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Because you're always patient and you always get the value, and I appreciate it.
Very appreciated, thank you so much.
The funny Phil.
All right, Phil. So if you need, if you have parts that you're unable to get, you can talk to Phil, because Phil manages to get buses and backwater, I don't know.
So, well, good evening, everyone, my pleasure to see you again. And pretty cut and dry, simple budgets, they out here. You'll see an increase in salaries, and just to let you know, Transportation's got seventy-one plus employees, and I say plus because we have some afternoon drivers or just some morning drivers that aren't quote-unquote full-time bus drivers, but they just fill in because they have other jobs. But that, that is made up of our bus drivers, our monitors, and our mechanics, and office staff. So that's what I have, an increase there for salaries as the union contract is given, or has a raise in the salaries. Equipment is able to come down, a little bit on equipment due to just, it's been over, and I felt we can cut that a little bit. Other contractual needs is, it varies from what they come in to fix the lift, the bus lift, where they come in here. And of course, there's always a, a problem now with everything going up, and so we accounted for that by two point six, because, let's say, there are lifts, or garage doors, and anything that goes wrong with our equipment in the building, that they'll, they'll take care of, so. BOSI services, you know, just remains the same, that's our printer, copier in the office, things like that. Material supplies, which is our parts, parts are so hard to come by, as Jen knows, and Jen went out there and called our, our salesman, get me the parts.
Here's my bus.
We had, we had a bus sitting for quite a while, and, and, you know, it's, it's national back order, or it's first come, first served, and it's a very difficult field to maneuver with getting some of these parts. We had one bus sitting for way too long, but that was a General Motors issue, and as you follow the news, General Motors had a big, a big to do with trying to supply, that's why our vans, we couldn't even buy vans when we wanted to, and everything's just shipped around, and someone cancels out, and we can snatch that up real quick, because our buses were canceled. But anyway, we ended up faring very well with that, so. Parts, we went up fifteen percent, and that, the metal has gone up and skyrocketed. So of course, majority of our parts are metal, I mean, just a, a pipe this long for, exhaust pipe, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, it's just a pipe, you know? And it seems like it doesn't, it shouldn't cost that much, and back in the days, it probably didn't, but today's days, that's where we're at with that. Equipment, we were able to cut down on, again, due to our surplus that we've had before, and, you know, we just be able, be able to save right there. Other contractual things, that's, that's all the same at three, thirteen thousand, three fifty. That's gonna be our, our radio service guys coming in, our camera guys coming in for the buses and things like that, so. And the basic materials and supplies, again, we just had a, you know, a surplus that we were able to cut back down on and stuff. And then we have the contract transportation for students that are non-district, they live in the district, but we, they get transported up to Connecticut, and that's, that's done by outside source, and so the budget in there is up four hundred and sixty-three percent, so. But the overall, as you see, we're not purchasing buses this year, we'll be, I believe we'll be fine with doing what we have. Our mechanic likes to pull, when, when we do a DOT inspection, he likes to pull like the six buses out of service, so there's always a spare for the drivers to drive. It may not be so easy next year, you may have to say, you know, you're gonna have to re-inspect the day before, the morning of inspection, each bus, because we may not be able to. So we, we have it right now, a fleet of eighty-some-odd vehicles, and that includes a lot of the grounds vehicles that we have that we service and maintenance. The, the buses that we do have, we have probably approximately fourteen van buses that we have spare, and it's not a spare that sits there all day, because sometimes it gets used in the morning, but not in the afternoon. And then vice versa, it's, it's not used in the morning, but it gets used in the afternoon, so we have that flexibility, and the same buses, we have about fourteen, fifteen buses actually, because we just got one in that we'd ordered last year. So we have enough buses to, again, flip and rotate and, and get on with getting the job done, so. That's where, any questions I can answer for you?
How's ridership versus, versus like pre-pandemic?
Pre-pandemic, we're probably back up to where we, where we were. And just at Coleman Hill, starting in the fall, you know, that's our, that was like, most everybody drove Coleman Hill, their parents, and it was pretty heavy, but then, describing from where you guys were up there, the parent traffic, all of a sudden, just like, it's drastically less. Ridership has gone up at, at that point. I think a lot of people are more comfortable, and there's, you know, there's kids that still, you know, the parents want them to wear masks, so they're still masking up on the bus, and it's not, it's not an issue at all with the other kids, and it's, I think it's more the norm now that, that people, some people wear masks, some people don't, so I don't think, there used to be a lot of teasing at first, but I guess the way of life has shown them that it's, it's a pretty common thing that some do, but more people are, more people, more kids are taking the bus now. Maybe not so much the high school level, but, because that's still our traffic problem every fall. We're getting the buses in there on, you know, on time, I have to run a little bit early just to get them to get to school, because then you've got to go the extra run as the office runs, and you gotta get them all the way to here, and the traffic is just worse at the high school level.
I think it's also just because of their scheduling, right? Like, the office hours are early, so.
Yeah.
If you take the bus, you miss, you can't get there in time for office hours.
Yes.
And then after school, they've got so many activities.
So many activities, yeah, afternoon, obviously, yeah, they, they end up doing the sports. On a day when everything's canceled, we're loaded to the kennels, I will say that, so it's that way.
Wish my kids would take the bus.
But if they take the bus, they get there in time for office hours.
Yes.
Do that?
Yeah.
If they take the bus out there.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, we're.
I'm so sorry, Steve. Something was revealed.
Really?
Interesting, very interesting. Thanks, thank you to all your bus drivers, because they, many of your bus drivers have been here sort of decades, so thank you.
Long time, yeah, we had to retire. Well, one guy's leaving the end of, end of May, and he's, he's retiring and going down south. And another fellow just retired, unfortunately, he's been battling cancer the last several years, and he just felt it's time to, you know, work on that. He's, he says he's doing fine, and he looks fine, he came in the other day to give us all a hug and say goodbye, but he's. But he's, he's doing well and, but it's just time for him to go. So and knock on wood, I've got, as soon as those two say they're leaving, I've got two people saying, I'm looking for a job. So, you know.
It's a tribute to your leadership, so.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you, thank you very much.
One more quick question.
Sure.
I know that like there's such a logistical exercise in figuring out like the route, and COVID messed all that up because it was just a very confusing time. But now that we're sort of past all that, ridership's back up. Is there an opportunity to try to like optimize your routes better? Or is it, do you think we've maxed out on the opportunity?
We're probably maxed out on the best we can. The bell times are very difficult to make. So in the morning, only in the morning time, let's just clarify. In the morning time, for instance, the high school, middle school, as you know, they're right together. And then they get to Wampus. Wampus has their own separate buses. There might be a A bus, which means it's two buses in the same area just in the morning, just to give a less riding time on the bus. Since the driver's on the clock anyway and has, and it's to Coman Hill, we put them to work. I don't like anybody standing around or sitting around. We put them to work wherever we can. Coman Hill is a challenge because we have to, the bell time for there, we could not do the route. By the time we drop off Wampus at 8:30, 8:35, 8:40, the latest, if there's traffic or anything, to get to, to do the route, every route except for, no, except for one, and it's one through 14, we have to have an A route and split the run-up in the morning to two different buses.
To get the kids to school on time.
To get the kids to school on time because there's just not enough time. And again, it'd be a bell time issue. But no one wants to start the school, you know, start Coman Hill at 9:30, you know? It's, I don't blame them for that. But we do have the staff and as I say, we get in there and do what we have to do to. And everyone's, again, I can't say enough about the drivers that pitch in and willing to do whatever they have to do to, you know, get it done. And this year, a lot of, just a side note, a lot of parents have called up saying they're really fond of their bus driver because their bus driver has helped out with, you know, oh, my son's a little scared to ride the bus or they have, this kid's having a problem on the bus. And the driver, you know, went up and out of the way just to, you know, talk to them and say, hey, it's okay, you know, you come and see me, I can, you know, you're my buddy, you know, we'll take care of it. So really, I can't say enough about how some of our drivers and our veteran drivers and newer drivers are all just doing a fine job under what I can see.
I see your back to leadership, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And the activity buses busy as well?
What's that?
Activity buses.
Oh, yeah, activity buses, busy, busy, busy. We just, we just stumbled onto a, I'll have to work that with Gina. Coman Hill has the Byron Hill Soccer League. And we have a transportation forum to get a roster for everybody's riding. And all of a sudden, we find out that there's 50 kids that we have no idea are taking the activity bus because they somehow, they didn't use our roster and we didn't get it. So we created the spreadsheet and they copied it or something or came up with something of their own and gave it to Coman Hill, but didn't give it to us. So Coman Hill has all these kids and we're like, wait a minute, this, we're, so we're going to end up being close to almost, you know, how are we going to do this? Because I don't know if we have another bus to put up there. I don't know if you want to put another bus up in there. So we have to be very careful how we pick and choose and see, you know, accessory mess to see how it's sorted out. But because somebody thought it was this way and they went with it and it's not that way. So, but we'll, we'll get through one way or the other, but yeah. Activities, we did have to, on heavy sports days when we need drivers, we do end up combining like, we'll take the activities who has 19 kids and we'll take the temple who has 24 kids and they'll fit comfortably on a bus and they'll just combine the two. We don't like to do that so much to get them to their activities on time because, you know, they have to start their programs on time. But it's very difficult sometimes to navigate that. Day by day, it changes who rides the bus, how many people and where you have to go to on those given days. But we get through it.
We appreciate that. Sounds like we sorted it out very well. So any other questions?
Thanks for everything, Kelly. Thank you especially for those, you know, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning, conference halls.
That's okay. That's all right, I'm up anyway.
Those looking out his window, driving around all of the streets, our toughest streets, to see what the weather is, helping us with delays and everything. Never been easier.
It's a tough thing to, your place.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, do we have any comments about the budget from the audience? Okay, hearing none. And then any ordinary requests about the budget or changes or concerns?
Nope.
Nope, okay. And I guess it's next steps, so thanks. Oh, yes, gentlemen, thank you so much.
They're here to learn from anybody, so.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Phil.
So, Kelly.
Okay. All right, so we talked about the expense side and the budget, so we're going to talk about the revenue side. So you've seen this slide before, the school district budget is in three components, program, capital, administrative. So in certain terms of the revenue side, Byron Hills only receives 4% to 5% state aid on a yearly basis. So the majority of our revenue comes from our property taxes, 88%. 2% from our pilots, 4% from our fund balance and appropriations, and then 1% from other revenues. Just as a review, adjustment to the maximum allowable tax levy formula, the presentation I gave in January. I gave two presentations, one where there wasn't going to be an IBM pilot and one where there is. So there is going to be a new IBM pilot. I don't have the specific numbers of that pilot, but I estimated for purposes of calculating the maximum allowable tax levy. So the maximum allowable for next year is 1.93% or a tax levy increase of $1.6 million. There's just a quick slide reviewing the pilots. You can see in the, the big decrease from 17, 18 to 18, 19, that's when Swiss Re Pilot Expire came back on the tax rule. You can see the IBM pilot has reduced in the last five years. And again, I estimated a reduction for next year, '23, '24. Again, debt service, we had that bond expire in 2020, '21, about $2.5 million. We refinanced the remaining bond for some savings. And we have three more years of payment for debt service. And we'll have no debt service payments starting in the '26, '27 budget. So just as a review in terms of fund balance, so you have this information. Just quickly, the fund balance, how you get it? Whether you underspend your budget, you get more revenue than you anticipate or it's a combination of both, that's how you have a fund balance. So there's three kinds of fund balance. Assigned fund balance, which is carried over on a year-to-year basis for the following school year. Unassigned, which you're allowed to have 4% of your following year budget, essentially the same as account for easiest terms. And then restricted fund balance, which is reserves, which you hear about the most. They're established for a specific purpose. So just quickly, I want to review each reserve. We have seven. First reserve, the tax serviceria reserve. Just quickly, a tax serviceria is a company feels their assessment is too high. They file a grievance and look for a reduction in their assessed value. And the district has to refund that company the difference depending on the settlement. So we currently have $6.3 million in that tax serviceria reserve. We review that on an annual basis through consultation with the town assessor. Insurance reserve, really this is anything that's covered, that's not covered by insurance. We currently have a balance of $720,000 in that reserve. Property loss reserve, this was created four years ago. The district was paying a premium for coverage for property, for water damage. The garage over by HCC is in a flood zone. The district created this reserve because the maximum allowable payment, if there was a loss there, was $600,000. So the district created the reserve for $600,000. The reason it's 611 now is just the interest earned on those years has to be applied to that reserve. The next two are in tandem here, contribution towards retirement. This first one is for employees' retirement system, so pretty much anybody that's not a teacher, a principal, an aide. There's $4.8 million in that and that's for a large increase in the rate of retirement in a flat yearly basis. And again, this was, three years ago, this was created, sub-fund for the teachers' retirement. And we've added to that, again, it's a significant rate increase. It allows us to use this reserve and not have to increase the tax rate or tax levy to cover it. And that's at 2.1. The employees' benefit of the liability reserve, tongue twister. We have some contracts that you can get paid for your sick and vacation days upon your separation, upon your retirement. And that dollar amount of 653 equals how much liability we have for those payments. So if somebody retires, it's paid out of the reserve and not out of the budget. Unemployment reserve, if we ever have a situation where we have a significant increase in unemployment, we can dip into this reserve, there's $166,000 in that. And then finally, our capital reserve, this is a little different from the rest of the reserves. This requires a voter approval to use this reserve, whereas the other ones do not. This was created five years ago. It was created on a referendum, 10, up to $10 million. We could contribute to the capital reserve and it has to be spent over a 10-year period. We utilized this reserve two years ago, two, three years ago, two years ago with the turf field. So that's how we paid for it, through voter referendum.
What happens if, or 10 years if you don't use it? Does it go, where does it go?
So you have options. It could go back to, towards reducing the taxes in two, three years, one year, or you can re-up it. Essentially, you can have another proposition that says up 10 years, 10 million dollars.
And if, in your opinion, I guess if we had excess capital to put into a fund balance, would it be TRS? Is that where you would, you think the greatest need is? Because that looks a lot compared to the future liability.
Yeah, I would definitely say TRS. The rates might actually went down this year, but I anticipate it going, increasing in the next couple of years as usual. So yeah, I mean, if we had some surplus, that would be something I would recommend going forward. Okay, so this is the total balance altogether. We have $20.7 million. If you remember my presentation from October of this year where we talked about the difference budget and actual, we used $160,000 from reserve last year to balance the budget. So that's the difference between last year and this year at this time.
And it's too early, you know, for sure, but would you project by the end of the year, we would use any or you think we'll be, we'll be fine?
Yeah, I think we'll be okay. Last year, we had that big expense, if you remember, the boiler at the high school we had replaced in February. So that's kind of the reason why we run the negative there. Knock on wood, heating season's over, anticipating issues with that going forward. So we should be in good shape, hopefully. Okay, so portion of taxes, there's three factors that the calculation of your tax rate, how it affects the calculation of tax rate. So the tax levy is essentially what we tax our public. What we propose is a tax levy to the public and the funds that we receive. Again, that's 88% of our total revenue. Assessment is done by the town assessor on a yearly basis on your properties. They send that information up to the state. The state takes that information and calculates, uses it to calculate the equalization rate. The equalization rate is, instead of going into a town every year and reassessing every property, the state comes up with an equalization rate, which reduces your market value or increases the market value of your house on a yearly basis. So instead of going to every town, they come up with this equalization rate that does that calculation for you. So the lower your equalization rate, the higher your market value, essentially is the easy way. That formula right in the middle there shows you how to calculate it. Your assessed value usually doesn't change yearly, on a yearly basis much, if you're individual, unless you, you know, you added a kitchen, you added a room, you did some improvements. So your assessed value will pretty much be close to the same on a yearly basis. But the market value will change based on this change in equalization rate, okay? Here's the calculations, if you want to go back and take a look at that, try to do it yourself. But I want to just talk about the full value equalization rate for the properties within Byron Hills. So essentially, again, about 86% of our properties are in North Castle. And that's in this graph here. So if you were to purchase all properties in North Castle, easy way to think of this, it'd be about $5.2 billion. Mount Pleasant, $779 million, et cetera. Now, this is a big increase from the prior year. Prior year, the total, so this is, the total here is about $6.1 billion if you take North Castle, Mount Pleasant, Bedford and Newcastle.
That utilize our school system?
Right, properties associated with Byron Hills, correct.
That's the assessed value of the homes or the?
Full value.
Full value.
Purchase value.
Purchase value.
So if I went into North Castle, I could purchase everything in North Castle for that amount of money?
Theoretically, yes, for a $5.2 billion range, okay. So last year, it was 4.5, so it was a large increase from last year to this year. But as a whole, Byron Hills properties, last year it was $5.3 billion and this year, in this information, it's 6.1. So $785 million increase in the market value of properties within Byron Hills from last year to this year. Larger.
Number three, and what?
Is it, is it the market value that's gone up so high or is it, because there's also been a lot of building?
It's both, yeah, yes, it's both. But it's based on the change in equalization rate. So the state is saying your house is worth more than it was last year. So let's say your house is worth $800,000 in the prior year. State is saying for a town in North Castle, it's worth $923,000. So it's a huge increase in the market value associated to that property, okay? So let's just take a look town by town. This is the first year it's really been an increase in every, every town. You can see a very large increase in North Castle, $712 million, a 15.6% increase. And again, this is the total full value within the town of North Castle, okay? Again, that's that $5.2 billion increase. So again, $720 million increase in North Castle. Again, that's 30, over 3,700 properties, 86% of our properties are taxable properties. Newcastle, the same, that'll very largely increase, 17% increase. Again, that's only 44 properties, so it's not a huge amount of full value. You're looking at 32, you know, 32.6 million. But still, again, a 17% increase in the value of those sums as well. Bedford as well, 41 properties, $4.6 million increase of 24%. Again, only 41 properties, but a large increase. And then Mount Pleasant, if you look at Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant has been very consistent in terms of their full values, if you look from 19, 20 to 2022. And then it's increased last year and again, it did increase with everybody else this year, about almost 9% at $63 million as a whole. So when you calculate the tax rate, the changes in assessed value relates to the share in which the tax levy is. So if you have a large increase in tax, in assessed value, the more share of the tax levy you're going to take, okay? So if we, if we didn't have the tax levy increase at all, it is zero tax levy this year. There'd still be an increase, .6 in North Castle, .8 in Newcastle, 6% in Bedford and decrease in Mount Pleasant of 5.6%. Okay, so that is based on a 0%, that's just the shift in the assessed values, okay? So that can really affect that share of the total. And I'll get back, I'll come back to that at the end, so we can just tag that up. Just a review of the tax levy in the past. Here's the percentage on the right, the total levy, dollar amount on the left. This red line is what we have presented in terms of a tax that we proposed. And this black line is the maximum allowable. You can see that based on the formula that we spoke about in January, how the maximum allowable tax levy is calculated, it could really shift on a year-to-year basis. You can look at 18, 19, where the max was 4.5%, whereas in 16, 17, it was 0.43%. So again, those factors change a lot and that formula really can affect it. This year, we're proposing an increase to the max of 1.93%, something we haven't done in the past. We have a large increase in terms of health insurance, our contractual agreements. Our enrollment is continuing to increase. We have some properties that are being developed as we speak. So we thought now is the time to get to that maximum. Again, it's below the 2% and it's at the 1.93%. But again, over the last, since the inception of the formula, since 2012, '13, we've been below what we could have taxed, our maximum allowable tax of about $4.5 million. So over these last many years, we've kept it below. So in terms of revenue for next year, again, our tax levy increase, 1.93%. That's an increase of $1.6 million. Our payment of taxes, that's our Ingleverman taxes and our IBM. Again, the IBM is estimated based on an assumption for next year. Increase of 14% in other revenues, that's essentially our county sales tax and our interest earning. I've increased our county sales tax proposal for next year. Continually got an increase in county sales tax since it was increased over 1% sales tax three years ago. So I've increased that a little bit. Our interest earnings have been excellent this year and anticipate those going into next year as well.
What are you projecting, just, compared to this year that we're in right now?
Yes, so we budgeted $50,000 last year and we're about at $600,000 price point. So I've increased that $100,000 just to keep it.
So we're at $600,000 this year, but next year, you're budgeting?
A hundred.
Okay. So you're still very conservative?
Yeah, obviously, things are still fluid right now. I don't want to make a huge assumption. I think we'll be at a good point. I mean, we're getting 4.5% to 4.7% in our interest earnings right now, so excellent. I don't anticipate that going forward, but it could be, we could level out. But so I've been conservative in terms of our assumption for interest going into next year. State aid to 40%. State aid, a 14% increase. That looks large. I know you, you heard me say we had 5% state aid on a yearly basis. So it's not really a 14% increase. We got a little more last year in transportation and special ed reimbursements. So I budgeted less in state aid last year. So that budget to budget looks a little higher than it is. Really getting about 5 to 6% increase in state aid this year. And that's kind of continual with every year. And then finally, fund balance, again, reserves mostly, we're increasing that 16% additional 540,000 on reserve to meet that total budget increase of 2.87%. Please stop me if I'm going way too fast.
I guess, I guess the one thing just Kelly that's thinking about, think of next year or this year in a way, if we have in this year's budget, I'm not buying the buses 100,000 dollars less of going into the capital plan. Interest income is better than it's been in a long time.
Right.
And we're tapping in 500,000 dollars of reserves, which is a lot. Then next year, when we're going to have to probably spend some more money in the capital side, you don't want to continue to tap into your reserves. But yet it's sort of like the underlying biggest expenses that we have will probably maintain themselves, I would think. Have you just thought about just the dynamics of next year? Or just what you think about this year?
Yeah.
Because it seems like it could be tighter.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, I don't anticipate us dipping into the full reserve, utilizing that for reserve, that 3.1 million dollars. So I think we'll have that there. Hopefully, we don't have to jump into it all. So following you to next year, maybe we have to go into a little bit. Just remember, in two more years, that debt service comes off where I have that 2.5 million dollars. So we can kind of reset that budget at that point. If we have to use some reserve in the next couple of years, hopefully not, we could still be in a good position going forward.
Yeah.
And hopefully, health insurance doesn't continue to increase, although it may, levels out a little bit and the rates kind of level out a bit going into the following year.
And that's tricky as to whoever's around the table when that debt comes up. We all will be, maybe not, this will be, but we, we just have to.
I'm gonna be here.
But that's important to sort of maintain that discipline.
Yes.
Because around, around capital and around your replacement of, of our infrastructure and then around the maintenance of reserves, because it just really gives us the flexibility that we've set toward.
Absolutely. Again, you don't want to, you don't want to rely on reserves. That's an end game. We're trying not to do that.
Can't be your operating.
No, definitely not. Disappears. Okay, so in terms of the tax rate for each, each town, again, in North Castle, 86% tax rate, $736.02, $18.75 increase of 2.6. So every hundred, I'm sorry, every thousand of assessed value, it's an increase of 18.7. Okay, so the average home in Byron Hills is about a $19,000 assessed value. So you could take 19, okay, and you multiply that by 738.02. That's how you forget your taxes if you have the average. Okay, so that's 2.6% increase for North Castle, 2.82 for Newcastle, a large increase of 8.3 for Bedford, 3.4 for Bedford and a decrease at Mount Pleasant of 3.78%. So just, I wanted you to take a look at kind of the story.
You don't want to stay on that other slide for too long because this is very important.
This is the most important part here. I always like to point out assessed values. And again, it's based on assessed value, which the school district does not control. It's controlled by assessors and then the state when they develop the equalization rate. District has no authority or any input in terms of changes in assessments. And those changes in assessment can really change your percentage of tax rate increase. If you look back in 1516, in Bedford, they had a 12.18% increase in their tax rate in that one year. And the tax levy was 1.83%.
Is this the Irish slide?
No, not yet. That's if you.
I can't, I tried to, almost pulled away.
But Bedford's interesting because while they had the 12.18 in 1516, then they saw a decrease of 4.46, so then a minor increase and then 2.54, like some decreases and then minus 8.39 before this part of the year, right?
So yeah, they were, they were down last year. So they're back kind of where they are. But you gotta remember, that's, that's a 41 progress. So if you have a house that sells for significantly lower or higher, you can really change. 100%.
I know, but it's such a bad system.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it's, it's not the best.
It's only a good system when it's Bedford. Like if right now, you know, you live in Mount Pleasant and you're seeing a decrease of 3.78%.
Yes.
They haven't had a decrease in years.
Yeah, Mount Pleasant, you know, since 1920 going on has had a, had a fairly large, a pretty small increase last year, 0.4. But going back, they've had over 5 and 3. So
And remember, in the year, we had a 0% budget to budget increase. They had an increase.
Yep, yep. That was, that was, that was this year, 2021, right? I'm sorry, 1920.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's kind of where we are. Majority of our taxpayers, again, 86% being in North Castle, getting that 2.6, 2% last year. But if you look back into the last five or six years, it's been below 2%. In most cases, below 1.5 in a negative in 1617. So that shift in assessed value, remember we had that huge increase in town of North Castle, 712 million dollars. Their share is moving, really it's moving from Mount Pleasant to North Castle and a little bit of Newcastle and Bedford, that shift in the amount of the tax levy, share of tax levy. Got the Irish slide, the true tax rate. Unfortunately, this, this slide is kind of dying out because districts are beginning not to put their data. Because I'm assuming it doesn't look great for some of them. But Byron Hills is still in a great spot. Again, this is one where you want to be ranked last. Okay, last is the better. We're 25th out of 36. Unfortunately, 18 school districts didn't submit their data. But here's a slide to show where we are. Again, we're towards the, the bottom half, which is a good thing. Essentially, a true tax rate, you take your, your school, your, your house, you put it in another district and you compare other districts. That's how you, that's how you compare the value of your, your tax rate. And we're at 16, 15.69, you know, again, towards the, the lower end of, of the true tax rate, which is a good thing.
I know. When are we going to retire that slide? Like when it hits 20 districts that, yeah, when it hits 20 districts that don't put their data in, that's like so skewed.
Yeah, that's true.
It might be the last one, Kelly.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
With our, with our slide.
I don't know. Like, half the people don't respond. You can't say it either.
Yeah, it's, it's still something to be proud of.
Yes, it is. It is. How about from now on, let us know if it's not a good one?
We'll do. I think we'll be okay. So just as a review, tax levy increase, 1.93%, budget to budget, 2.87, and a total budget of 99.7. So we just have our, we got a little break here next week and then we have budget hearing for final proposed budget on April 11th, adoption on the 18th, our budget hearing and review of the proposed budget on May 2nd, then the budget vote on May 16th, Tuesday, May 16th, HCC from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m.
If you are watching, please go out to vote. Yes, you can't ask people out to vote, but please do vote because we have 11,000 and some odd voters and we're holding strong at 400 and something people who actually come out to vote.
Yes. Any questions or?
Thank you for.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Okay. Send it over to Jen for sprinting.
I sent your slides.
So first, Kelly and I are going to be going on the road for our principal's coffee budget discussions at the buildings, April 18th at Moffis, April 25th at the high school, 26th at HCC. This is all in the notes in the administrative content.
Is it on the calendar? They're, they're the same ones that are on.
They're going, they're going to come out. Yeah, they're all the same. And May 2nd at Coman Hill. And Lara and I are going to do filming for the budget, for a budget presentation and that is all scheduled. And we'll be sending that out to the community too. Kelly's working on the budget brochure so that everybody gets this delivered to their homes. And thank you very much to Mary Jones, who supports Kelly in putting that budget brochure together. Mary's fantastic. And she gives me the distinct honor of picking out the pictures.
Yes. No debate this year.
And then we have our student highlights. We have some really fun ones. So congratulations to Elsa Ross. Her artwork was in the K-12 ceramic exhibition and it's an akarena, which is a simple wind instrument in the form of a human heart. Her piece was among 152 selected from more than 1,300 submissions. Best ceramic work from around the nation. And this was held in Cincinnati earlier this month. So congratulations to you, Elsa. And then curls flag football. I went out for the premiere. It was fantastic. Wednesday, the 22nd though, they traveled to summer. So they participated in 15 school jamboree with several Giants to kick off the season. You could read the names of the Giants. I have absolutely no idea who they are. But I'm really grateful to them and they look, that guy looks very happy to be there supporting our kids. And I loved, one of the students was talking about it and she said, you know, we, I felt like we went there, we didn't really know a lot about football and we left there and we knew a lot about football. And they are doing very well. They had their first game and much success to our flag football. Great spectators. They have fantastic plays.
And the spectators, we've got so many.
It's huge. And our spectators, there was an entire student section. There was an entire student section.
Two teams, there was so much interest.
38 girls, I think, girl, 17. Yep, awesome. So congrats to them. And I was pretty impressed by the plays that they were actually making. We have some more science research awards at West F. So 19 science research students have received a bunch of awards. The grand prize, however, was to three of our seniors, Chloe Bernstein, Samantha Milwitz, and somebody you might know, Emily Stangle, our board president's daughter. Yay! Congratulations.
It was a wonderful event.
It was great. And they're going to represent Byron in May at the ISF to compete against over 1,800 students from 75 countries. That is pretty amazing. On average, $4 million in awards are given annually at Regeneron's ISF and congratulations to our three superstars. Three amazing students, by the way, just great individuals. 19 students were awarded winners. I am not going to read all of these because this is pages long. But I would like you to take a moment to take a look at first place category awards. Second place, and that was, first one was sponsored by Regeneron Pharmaceuticals. Second place category awards were sponsored by Con Edison. You can see that we have six of our students who are there receiving those. Third place, sponsored by Boehringer Ingelheim Care Foundation, two students. And fourth place, sponsored by the Westchester Academy of Medicine. And all of these award winners as well. So United States Air Force Award, I'm not going to read all of the names, but Chloe Bernstein, Kayla Newman, Innovations in Biological Sciences and Research Award. I mean, this is, this is absolutely unbelievable. Future of Medicine Award, Excellence in Medical Research Award. This is, I can go on. You want to stay till tomorrow? Remy, we have the Momentum Women in Science Award. We have the T-Town Young Environmentalists, the Maker Safe Excellence in AI Ethics Award, Today's Students, Tomorrow's Engineers Award. I mean, this is like, wait, there's more. I love this. This is so good. I could do this all day long. We have everything from Environmental Perspiration Award, interesting. And the West F Engineering Innovation Award, Biomedical Science Award from Regeneron. And, oh, this isn't showing up yet. Okay. And that is it. That's it. That's all I got. So just so very proud of that program, our students in that program, everything they have achieved and just continuing to go out there again and again and talk about their research and become so proficient in everything that they've been spending all of this time and energy working on. So just pretty spectacular. Switching over, we do have Tuda Odegi from varsity cheerleading and she won Bobcat of the Season, Winter 2022, 23. She's one of two athletes to receive this nomination. And I encourage you to go on our website to watch this video of her as well. And last but not least, we have it. Oh, do we have volume?
I'm just being someone that steps up without being asked and being a positive role model for people around them. Being a cheerleader to me means bringing a lot of school spirit into school and hyping everyone up for games and getting everyone excited and just bringing the love that I have for the sport out into the community as well. I think that all the work we put in with late night practices and stuff and then going to competitions against teams that have gotten like first and second place and then going and us consistently getting second place and beating them with really high scores. So all the hard work and determination we put into practice during the week all pays off on the weekend during competition. Winning this award means a lot to me. I feel really honored and blessed that I can represent cheerleading as a sport specifically in our winter season to the Byron Hills community. And I feel very honored that I get to be here today and be recognized for my athletic accomplishments.
We're honored that you voted Byron Hills. I'll just say that. We also have a congratulations to Colin McMamus from varsity wrestling, also earning Bobcat of the Season.
At first I did it like just against a shapeless cross because that's my main sport. I've been able to learn to overcome things and persevere through things. And wrestling also teaches you a lot about life in general. If you're by yourself out there, yeah, you're on a team, but you don't, like teammates can't come and help you. Like it's you against the other guy and it's your job to beat the other guy. I was wrestling at the May Pack Tournament in like the Constellation semifinals. I was down by five going into the third period. I came back, brought it to overtime and then I won in overtime. I know plenty of other kids who they would have loved to get this award and it just means a lot to, to me to show all my hard work. Like my season didn't end the way I wanted it to, but all, all my hard work, it paid off in some way.
They know how to fall. Just amazing. That's it, Kelly.
No other staff report for him?
All right. Thank you so much. You're so excited for all the kids. That's wonderful and stuff.
And thank you, Brian, also, esteemed. What kid gets that kind of, I mean, first of all, you get the award and the second roll and you get it. It's really nice for them to have forever.
Absolutely.
Okay, that brings us to reward reports. We had an athletic advisory meeting recently and they talked about, you know, Bobcat TV and future leadership roles there as some of their key players are starting to graduate. So there were suggestions on the team, all of the affairs at the beginning of the year and the affairs at HCC. So they're going to consider putting Bobcat TV into sports during the affairs. I think that was the name, I'm sorry, that one right there. Rob's doing a great job. Great job getting a lot of feedback from the community. Anybody else? Okay. I don't see minutes from the last. That's six minutes.
In a minute.
They're already. We'll do it. Yeah, we'll do it next. Okay. Communications to the board. Anybody? Okay, none. So I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you. All of them favor? Hi, everyone. Thanks and have a good break and we'll see you.
Happy holidays.
Yes, the holidays. On the 11th. Thank you. Safe travels.